Time is now six o'clock. This time we'll call this meeting the order. It's been a September meeting. Dawson County Planning Commission. We'll begin with invocation from Neil Horns, if you would please.
Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful county, and I pray that you can just guide us to make the right decisions for this county in Jesus's name.
Amen. I can please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of Fair, to the republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. This time we'll have our roll call. Ms. Harmony, when you are ready. Record show where for present, Mrs. John Millie Dunn is at home sick tonight. Under announcements, there will be a planning commission meeting on October the nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, same location, same time. Gentlemen, have you had opportunity to review your minutes? If so, is there a motion?
Motion to approve minutes.
Second, moving a second to approve the minutes. All in favor. Motion is carried four zero. Gentlemen, assume you've had opportunity to look over your agenda as presented by staff. Is there any amendments to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve agenda as presented.
Second, move in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor. Motion carries four zero. If you are here tonight to speak either in favor or in opposition of any application, and you have given more than two hundred and fifty dollars to any local official campaign, there is a form that you will need to fill out, and Harmony has that at the desk up here before us. We'll begin with new business application for variance. VR twenty-one dash thirteen, James Callis is requesting to vary from Dawson County Land Use Resolution, Article Three, Section three oh nine C three, front and rear setback reduction, tax mount parcel L seventeen one five nine Athens Bolt Club. Mr. Callis, are you here? If you would, please come forward to the podium. You'll find a piece of paper and a pen on the podium. If you would write your name and address on the podium, or on the piece of paper on podium. No, on the piece of paper on the podium. If you would give us a brief presentation as to your request for variance.
Oh, this is in Athens. Small. One parcel land, and they divided it up in lots, never did record lot of them. As the time has proceeded onward, and we're in the in the future, I guess. The lots have been recorded in some of them. Some of them still haven't been. The lots were, when they made the lots up, they already had dwellings on a lot of them. They didn't know. There was no rules or regulations on them. They just, you know, that's fine. You're five feet off the line here, or ten feet off there, or whatever. They didn't really look at any zoning laws or anything like that. That being said, this particular project is, they want to add a little carport to the side of it. It's on the right side. There's nothing in the way of it. The neighbors don't care. We've talked to them. They haven't shown any opposition of it. The rest of it is just a little bit of remodeling that we're going to do. It's all on the existing footprint. Lot of these variances that we're asking for is, the house has been there for so, I don't know, gosh, probably since nineteen sixties. And while we were going for the variance on the right side, I was recommended to me to go ahead and just do them all, and get it all brought up to code into what was required.
Who's the actual owner of this piece property?
Pardon me?
The owner of the property?
The owner is Regina Talent.
And what's the lot size on this particular lot?
The lot size is, I think it's like third of an acre. I had a survey on it.
Point zero eight on the.
Yeah, I know what it says, but I'm taken aback by that. We have documentation that says it's point zero eight acres in front of us.
That's about right.
Point zero.
We had a survey made of it and recorded for the requirements now. Showing the actual placement of the lot and the house on the lot and all the encroachments that were there.
Please make some help on that.
Certainly, I knew they'd used up every square inch, but I couldn't quite wrap my head around point zero eight acres.
It's this point two four.
That's a quarter of an acre, I can see, but less than a tenth.
Yeah, it's not a quarter acre.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant? Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Sorry about that.
It's all right. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? Seeing those, or anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? See, and now this time we'll close it to the board for discussion. Gentlemen, Athens Boat Club. We've seen multiple variances over the years. And here's another. Any discussion? Seeing the discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to approve variance.
Second, move in a second to approve. All in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension being the chairman, which is me. Branch request VR twenty-one dash fifteen. Jim King is requesting to vary from Dawson County Land Use Resolution, Article Three, Section three oh eight C six B driveway width increase from ten foot to twenty foot. Tax mount parcel one fourteen zero three three dash zero zero five Dawson Forest Road. Mr. King, are you available?
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding he is on his way up the steps as we speak. So if we want to come back to that one.
We'll give Mr. King just a moment and see if he comes through the door. If not, we can vary the agenda. Gentlemen, seeing Mr. King has yet to come through the door, would you like to vary to the agenda and push VR twenty-one dash fifteen to the end of the agenda? Excuse me. Mr. King, would you please come forward to the podium? There's a piece of paper on the podium. Please sign your name and address.
Thank you, sir.
If you would, please give us a brief presentation as to the various quest twenty-one dash fifteen. This is the first variance that you're bringing forth tonight.
Yes, sir. Thanks. This is the parcel that was, we had before y'all last month. At the corner of Dawson Forest Road and Highway fifty-three. And during that, we had a zoning condition that stated that we would have two car garages and therefore requires a two car driveway width. And the subdivision regulations require the RMF zoning to only have a single driveway width or ten foot wide. So we have to come back before you for a variance to clarify that zoning condition.
So the zoning condition that was stipulated by this board, as well as the Board of Commissioners, was to have a two car garage. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And that stipulation, in order to be met, it requires a variance.
That is correct.
Ten feet to twenty feet. Okay. Any other questions, the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? See, and now is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? See, and now this time we'll close the board for discussion. Gentlemen, a discussion on meeting the stipulation this board placed upon Mr. King's project. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the variance.
Moving a second to approve, approve the variance. All in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Application for special use, beginning with SU twenty-one dash zero three. Wayne Mulkey is requesting a special use of tax mount parcel zero three seven dash zero three five for the purpose of placing a mobile home on less than five acres in an RA zoning. Someone here to speak for Mr. Mulkey. Please come forward. Please write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. Please state your name.
Kimberly Ray.
Please give a brief presentation as to why you're reading the special use.
Because at the moment, right now, there is a camper that is being lived in as far as home use. It definitely needs to be bigger. My parents are seventy-one year old and their health's not great. My health's not great. So I do want to be close to them. My whole family lives on that whole entire hillside. There is no strangers. We're all family. Been there for years. And I'm pretty much the only one that truly need the home.
Okay. According to my information, this was moved in by Habitat Humanity. Is that correct?
That's who gave the home to us.
Okay. Okay. And you're looking to move the camper away and
Take it away completely.
And put the mobile home. Okay. Are you aware that there are some stipulations requesting that you put a foundation up and under it?
Oh, yeah.
That you attach the meter to the side of the house itself instead of freestanding pole?
Right.
Are you okay with it?
Not familiar, but they have discussed it.
Okay.
And I'm not really what you'd say dumbfounded about all of it, but I'm not informed about everything either.
Okay. What staff has recommended to us in the packet of information that I've received, is it actually not still be mobile?
Yeah.
It actually said on a foundation, concrete block perhaps on the foundation, not have a freestanding temporary pole, but have your meter attached to the side of the house, making it a permanent house dwelling instead of a mobile home that you could hook to and move.
They have done that. As far as the discussing, it's got the footings and whatever else has got to be done, and the whole nine yards, the underpinning as far as permanent. It's not going to be partial or, you know what I'm saying? It'll be a permanent foundation.
And you're looking to live here yourself?
I am.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, the applicant? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? See, and none is anyone here to speak in opposition to the application. See, and none at this time we'll close it the board for discussion. Gentlemen, is there any discussion on special use for Wayne Mulkey and Dragon Flalou? Seeing none is our motion. I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
Move in a second. All in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. SU twenty-one dash zero four, Jackie Townley is requesting a special use of tax mount parcel L eighteen zero six eight for the purpose of placing a temporary sawmill in an RA zoning. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Townley? Would please come forward to the podium? If you would, please write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. If you would, please state your name.
Jackie Townley.
If you would, please give us a brief presentation as to why you're requesting special use.
Well, first of all, I didn't know I had to have a permit to have a temporary hobby sawmill. And I was informed by the county that I had to have one. And I applied for a temporary permit. It's just a hobby sawmill. It's not for it's just, just a hobby and saw some boards to go on a trailer and build a corral and stuff out of. It's not, never intended to buy. It's not a commercial sawmill. It's just, it's portable, still got tires and wheels on it, still got a ton on it. Like I said, I was not aware that you had to have one.
In residential agricultural zoning, RA allows for certain things, and there are certain prohibited uses. Well, the prohibited use is a sawmill without a special use. It's been left up to the planning department to determine what a sawmill is, and this is, it does constitute a sawmill since it is a portable, but it is a sawmill. So in order to allow it to operate, you would have to have a special use permit, which is what brings us to here. Is this a woodmizer?
It is a woodmizer sawmill.
What size is it?
I think it's a TR forty. Or T something forty, I don't know for sure. That's a picture right there.
Okay, it says woodmizer. Is this the only sawmill that you're looking to use on this?
The only thing I'm looking using it, it'll just run every once in a while.
So you're just looking to use
Personal use only.
Personal use only.
No, I ain't going to saw no lumber to sell or nothing. It's totally personal use only.
So there'd be no log trucks coming in and nothing along that line?
No.
So an agricultural use and agriculture zone, is that what you're doing? Okay. Is there any other questions, the applicant?
Oh, yeah. When did, when did you start using it?
I said, it's probably been there about a month and a half. Cause I didn't know I had to have a permit.
How, how often have you used it in that time?
I probably saw twenty logs with it in that time.
Have you had any complaints?
I've not had no complaints personally. To me, the planning director told me he had one complaint on a neighbor lived right beside it. Actually, the only man that can see it is Mr. Hulks. He can see it. He's the only other person that can see it. It ain't on my problem.
Is that how it, how it, how you got caught?
That's how, that's how, that's how they come told me that I had to have. Yes. I did not know you had that.
Okay.
How far away is it from his property?
His property?
Yes, sir.
Probably twenty-five feet from the property line.
Okay.
I, I guess I ain't measured, but I guess it's twenty-five. It might be thirty, I don't know.
So did you purchase the, the woodmizer?
I did.
Okay, gotcha.
Just for record sake, Jack, how many logs could you saw in an hour with that thing? Just
Just a regular log, like you see laying there. You probably saw two or three.
An hour?
An hour, if you had, if you had two people running.
You might get how many boards out of that?
Depends on if you saw, you wouldn't get, depending if you're tall enough, you wouldn't get a dozen, you wouldn't get two dozen boards out of it. It's just, it's just a hobby, you know? I never intended, I ain't no sawmill man. You know, I ain't planning no run, no sawmill.
Any other questions, the applicant? Thank you. So anyone here to speak in favor of the application? If you would, please come forward. Write your name and address on the piece of paper there on the podium. Please state your name. Please state your name.
Justin.
Okay.
I'd like the zone, our sharing to look at page eight, and I'll ask y'all to look at page eight in your agenda today. I don't know, Mr. Bennett, got my message, but as of eleven o'clock today, you seem thing different from that page and the rest of the agenda. Looking at all of them for tonight. You see any name or address listed on any of these pages? I don't think that's according to this list of adjacent property owners, it's not legal. This is advertised. I can't see where it's been advertised. Did y'all send a letter? To adjacent property owners?
Yes, sir. They were sent out.
So the county went to the expense of going, looking at all these names.
I do that for every zoning, yes, sir.
Okay, well, why do, why does eight other people tonight?
Sir, are you speaking in favor of this application?
Well, I'm kind of wondering why I got through the system. It doesn't list and the public information that it lists a bunch of tax map numbers.
Right.
Every other person's had a list, who they caught, the contact address. If the county's got to do that, why we have that purpose? What's the purpose of spending taxpayers' money to duplicate a service? I'm for it, but I'm not for the county spending my time for it.
Good.
I don't think that's, it's, everybody else has to do it. Why is there a difference in that? Open up your website and look, go down the pages, just like why, why, why am I spending my tax money for somebody else? The other people, Mr. King had to do it. Mr. Hamby had to do it. It's not right. What I'm for or against, it doesn't matter. It's the principle behind following the system, and there's a system. Ask Dawson County Plant City. Got through the crack. That's my, that's my comment. It's not a comment. Didn't have a sawmill. I don't take for it. And it appears I'm paying for it.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? Ms. Harmony has it. If you would, please state your name, sir.
Jimmy Hamby. One sixty-eight Parker Road.
Thanks, sir.
I have no problem with this hobby, and that's what it is. If you saw constantly all day, you wouldn't get a load out of there for a week. This thing is that small. It's not been placed there for that reason. I took some logs over there and gave this family that were going to be thrown away. And I'd rather say I'm used for some purpose than put them in a landfill somewhere, not do anything with them. And I live, if you go straight across from my house, I'm about level with this thing. I hear some motorcycles, some four-wheelers. These boys have grown up riding these things, and I can hear them. I've not heard this woodmizer. And I really don't have a problem with it going there. But the problem that I do have, I want to bring the attention to this. Is this right here? That's placed in my mailbox, and that's against federal law. That's part of my house, part of my home. And I have private things in my mailbox. Nobody has a right to come up. You're supposed to get a bulk rate postage paid stamp on these things to put them in anybody's mailbox. I got a problem with that. My name is on my mailbox. You don't have any problem finding me. I'm not going to run. We let people take over our country already. But when you start opening my mailbox, you're at my But when you start opening my mailbox, you're at my house. I'd suggest you, uh, don't do that.
Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? See, if anyone to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper that's there on the podium. Would please state your name.
Good evening. My name is James Brewer. I'm a registered voter in Dawson County. And I live so close to the subject property that I can hear the sawmill every time it starts. I've been given the privilege of speaking for the people who are opposed to the rezoning, many of which are in the audience. Would those opposed, please stand? Thank you. I'm also speaking for some ninety people who have signed positions in opposition to the sawmill that live in the immediate area. If you'd like this copy, you're welcome to it.
Welcome. Leave it with your good luck.
We are requesting that the following objections be put on record. I wish to bring your attention to page eighty-eight of the application. I don't know if you have the application with you. If you don't, this is going to be very difficult for you to follow. All right. I'd like to bring your attention to page eighty-eight of the application, specifically under the analysis heading. We are, we are challenging the analysis and the observations noted with respect to the request. The analysis states that the proposed uses of the property would fit the general character of the region. This is not true. The property will not, this property's use will not fit the general character of the region. The area is owned residential and agricultural and has never been zoned for any other purpose. The analysis states that the property in question is adjacent to a parcel already accustomed to truck and work equipment. The only truck and work equipment in that area is that of Townley Construction Company, which operates on a property that is zoned residential and agricultural and has never been zoned commercial. I'd like to address the items as they're listed on the page. Item A states that all adjacent properties are zoned residential and agricultural. However, Mr. Townley has a commercial office on the building, a construction company, a plumbing company, a portable toilet company, along with a landfill and an overwhelming number of related vehicles. This is not consistent with the future land use map. The side of the construction company is an eyesore on the community. It has continually expanded since the inception and has become an environmental disaster with the landfill very close to the floodplain. The landfill contains tons of decomposing concrete, asphalt, scrap metal, and there's over a dozen non-working trucks and heavy equipment on the property. The application asks for a five-year temporary permit. Given the way his current construction company looks, what is the sawmill area going to look like in five years? Onto item B. Item B states that there's no diminishment of property values. We beg to differ. The property adjacent to the sawmill, parcel L one eight zero six six is where Mr. Clint Halsey has recently built a house. Contrary to what you've heard, the sawmill began raining, running in June of this year. The view from Mr. Halsey's living room window is that of a sawmill, a bunch of logs and a bunch of ripped up boards. This clearly devalues his property with the sawmill producing as much as ninety decibels of noise as it runs. This is equivalent to a jackhammer, not to mention the related truck traffic and pollution. The rezoning of this property is detrimental to the surrounding homeowners. As Townley expands his businesses, he infringes on the health, safety and general welfare of the community. Onto item C. Item C claims there'll be no destruction of property values. The entire community disagrees. We don't want the noise. We don't want the traffic. We don't want the pollution. And what's become of the waste products? Are they going to go to his onsite landfill, roll their road and run down into the lake, cause further destruction? Bear with me, I'm about done. Item D. I agree with item D. How about that? Cause it says there will be no gain to the public. There will be no gain to the public. Only irritation and discontent can from this, can come from this rezoning. Onto item B. It states that the property is suitable for the proposed use and fit with the general character of the area. The general character of the area is agricultural and residential. Rezoning this will be in direct conflict with Dawson County's two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan and the accompanying future land use plan. In the future land use plan, the subject property is, is identified to be sub-rural residential. And sub-rural residential clearly prohibits any development other than residential. Item F. Item F is an obvious attempt to get around the impending future land use plan by incorporating this undeveloped land into the existing industrial complex on the property. Again, this is a threat to the health, safety and general welfare of the community. Finally, I know you're waiting for it. Item G. The application is asking for a length of five years. How is five years temporary? The volume of timber on the property doesn't warrant this request. Your own engineering department did not sign off on this application for reasons including egress and ingress to the site, for truck size and type, for operating business hours and for floodplain concerns. In conclusion. Gentlemen, the issue, the issue here is zoning enforcement. The quality of life for families in the area will be greatly diminished. These families have invested millions of dollars in their homes. They've paid thousands of dollars in property tax for the privilege to live in what they believed was a residentially zoned neighborhood. Planning Commission cannot in good faith approve this request. The commission is mandated to act in the best interest of the county. Approving this zoning variance will set a precedent which will destroy the integrity of the current zoning classifications. This will send the messages to all the business in the area that they can expand at will without concern for the surrounding community. This application is in direct conflict with the Dawson County two thousand eighteen comprehensive plan, which calls for residential development in the area and only residential development. Branding this rezoning request refringes on the rights of all citizens and is detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of the community. The fact that the applicant has continually violated the code over years doesn't give him the right to continue to violate the code. Please deny this application. Thank you.
Do you want anyone else to speak in opposition to the application?
Sandra Sigmund.
Please write your name and address on the piece of paper.
I live in the Athens Boat Club and I'm really concerned about a couple of things. And maybe this has been answered in some of the filings that have occurred. But I'm concerned about the logs coming in and out. He said there wasn't going to be any logging truck, but as you know, the War Hill Park area is in and out. There's no other way to get into the communities back there. So if there was an accident occurring with one of these logging trucks, how would that impact others that live in that area that are traveling on War Hill Red? I'm also concerned about any environmental impact that may have, including any chemicals that are used, the admissions for air quality coming from that. It sounds like it's not a commercial operation, but I don't know how many logs it takes to make whatever he's trying to build or use. So for that, I'm concerned about the waste volume. Where is it going to go? And then, like I say, transportation in and out. And I just hope that as you're considering all of the information coming before you tonight, that you will consider these things as well. And if these environmental studies and such haven't been done, I think you should consider that. I don't know exactly the area and this gentleman, Mr. Brewer. I guess you must live right around the property. I've not taken a ride down that road to exactly see what's down there. But it's just very concerning to me because it's on a two-lane road. Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper on the podium. And for the record, please state your name.
My name's Kelly Wedeman. Live at two two nine Oak Grove Road. I have nothing against Mr. Townley. I'm sure he's a very nice man. But we built a house on the lake close to three years ago. We paid close to six thousand dollars in taxes. If you're going to grant something like this, then you go against everything that we were told when we moved in. It's, it won't be residential. It'll be mixed use. And so we repressed the two. And like the lady said before, there's only one way in and out of that area. And that road goes right through there. We, we get stopped enough as it is with trucks, construction. So my husband and I would like to have you see requests that it be denied. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper on the podium.
My name's Vera Basler. We live at three eight six Indian Cove Drive. And I certainly have nothing against Mr. Dawsonville. I am someone who believes in hobbies, but my husband and I both have the same argument that Ms. Kelly has. We spent a lot of money for our home and it turns out that this property is directly in our backyard. You can say we're on the cove and his property is on the other side of the cove. So all the noise comes across the water. And I'm about to cry now because I really love living here and it's such a quiet, beautiful place. And the first time I heard this sawmill, I thought there was a construction site there. I thought, oh, I hope that doesn't take long until that house comes up. And now I found out that this is the kind of noise that could be coming at us over and over again. And it's really frightening. So I asked you to consider the fact that we really were expecting something else when we moved here. And it's a very noise. It's a really nerve-deafening noise. I mean, it is something you don't want to have to listen to all afternoon long. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper on the podium. For the record, please state your name.
Cindy Anna Rich. Ladies and gentlemen, my husband and I lived in Coming since we got married. We moved to Harbor Ridge and we were fortunate enough that somebody sold the house. Nobody leaves Harbor Ridge. Nobody sells in Harbor Ridge. You know why? Because we love it there. I had a chance to take a ride down to see the property. I'm not happy. I don't live as close as those people do to this gentleman. I don't know a thing about this gentleman. But I can tell you that if it is true and this gentleman had that piece of equipment and he had it there beforehand, he's not upright. Every single person in our community that I live with, every single day as I walk down that neighborhood is upright. I have two gentlemen in our neighborhood, possibly three, my husband being one of them, who hobbies as woodworking. He maintains all his equipment. He's very thorough. He's very clean. There's a gentleman two doors down from us that just moved in not too long ago. He has the same thing. And there is never, ever a moment where you hear it loud enough that I've had one neighbor come to me in the time we've lived there and that's three years. Never once have they complained. I had a neighbor come to me saying, this is what's going to happen. Now, no disrespect. My husband's fifty-two. He's in good shape. He's in good stature. I saw this gentleman walk up here and I'm certain that he's a fine upstanding man in the community. But I also looked at that size of a piece of equipment. And I don't know if y'all watch any of the shows that are on the TV that do the home improvement and the things like that. There's a gentleman who does off the grid. Gentleman bought that equipment and brought it up to Alaska. That's quite a big piece of equipment. And unless you're doing furniture or you are doing some kind of a business, you got no reason to be operating that size equipment. And no disrespect to him, but a gentleman at his age with all the grass that I can see, and certainly the mud's going to get in there. I don't know how that man isn't going to fall down and hurt himself if that's just a hobby. Now, that's, that's the simple part of it. The worst part of this is, is that you can see how many people here are very concerned about their homes. We live on a go-in and a go-out situation. And if you remember last year, maybe you do, we had a tree that fell. And there was no way for us to get to our home. We were literally ten feet from the little turnoff to go into Harbor Ridge. Couldn't go that way. Had to go back out, go around, go down a hill that somebody had made and literally come back in so we could go around that tree. If this happens and there's a spill or there's an issue or something happens, you are limiting people from their medical needs from their homes and you are taking away quite a bit from them as far as property value and the availability of them to be able to have a calm life. Now, I've listened to all these gentlemen. I've only been in this property for three years, lived in the city of Coming. And I can tell you that these people are fine upstanding people. They work every day. They live every day. They enjoy their properties just like y'all do. But this man, if that's going to be his hobby, I have a hard time thinking that he's going to be able to do that on his own. My husband is fifty-two and I guarantee you, he couldn't operate that by himself. That's a big machine. And no disrespect to that gentleman, but God's blessed him with a lot of years. And it doesn't look to me like somebody would be able to do that in his stead if he's doing that on his own. That's a big piece of equipment sitting there. And I know that we've had a lot of rain and I know what that can do. And if that's where exactly he has it, that's a big problem because of the dust that's going to run. And I can tell you myriad of things, having a husband who uses a machine. I've never once had a complaint from our neighbors, never once had a problem with somebody coming to us. But I fear for the fact of all these people who live and work and try to get in and out. And I'm very concerned about the environment. I worry about the people that live across from this man. I took a drive down that road. I wouldn't want this. I wouldn't want this at all. And I'm just saying from somebody who's been in the neighborhood for three years and is somebody who is the wife And I'm just saying, from somebody who's been in the neighborhood for three years and is somebody who is the wife of a woodworker who does it as a hobby. We've never once had our neighbors complain, never once had our neighbors do anything because we're respectful. I'm not saying this gentleman wouldn't be respectful, but I don't see a man at his age being able to run that piece of machinery on his own. And to do what he wants to do and to have all of this. I'm kind of at a loss. So I'm asking respectfully that you say no, because quite frankly, I really think that in some instances, it's really think, think long and hard before you say yes.
Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Certainly. I told you, if you leave it up there, we would. If you would play it here, please. Thank you, sir. We'll enter it in. This time we'll close the board for discussion. Any discussion on Mr. Townley's wooden sawmill on his property in War Hill? The five-year special use permit.
Well, this is not, this isn't a rezoning. It's a special use permit. The RA zoning does allow for a special use permit for a temporary sawmill. But a temporary sawmill is supposed to be no more than one year. So I don't know how we could do anything more than one year if we did approve it. How long is this? I'm assuming this property is RA zoning since we had zoning.
Yes.
And when, when was that? When, when did we get zoning? Eighty-six. So 35 years it's been zoned this way.
So yes, 35 years it's been zoned as RA, as well as several properties around it, or zoned RA.
Right. Can we get Mr. Townley back up here?
Mr. Townley, would you please come back to the podium?
Where, where on the property is the sawmill right now?
We're on the property.
Yeah, I know. It looks like kind of a
It's behind, it's back in behind my house.
Okay, so on the thin, on the thinner part of the property, on, on the right, the right side of it.
It's right side of the property, if you're looking at War, from War Hill. Yes, sir.
Gotcha. Behind your house?
Yeah.
Is it right at the edge of the wood line?
It's back in the edge. It's out in the field.
Okay. So pretty close to your property line?
Yeah, it's about 25, 30 feet, like I said, about probably off one, off one side. And it's probably 100 off one side and 300, 400 off the other. I don't know how far this, I tripped.
How, how much have, would you say you've been using this thing like a week, you know, say a week?
I might use it one time a week, might not use it noon.
What have you been doing the last couple of months?
I might use a couple of days a week, three days a week, then I might not run it for a week or two.
Like how long at a time?
Oh, two, three hours.
Two, three hours.
Depends on how much time it is.
Yeah. I was just curious how much you've been using it. I think that's all I've got for Mr. Townley.
Thanks, sir. Once again, close the board for discussion.
Well, the noise ordinance is for the county. I think it stayed 1,500 feet away from another structure. And the hours of operation from 10:00 PM to 6:00 PM, it has to be quiet. AM on weekdays, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM on weekends and holidays. Now, I, based upon the information we have, and I can't tell how close it is to any structures. You know, you're always going to have some, sound variances that you have to deal with. But if he falls into compliance with that, I think as a hobby, if he's not using it for commercial use, the whole idea of bringing log trucks in doesn't seem like it's a, a real big contention. 60 months seems like a long time for a variance.
Well, I mean, the code says no more than one year. Land use regulations.
No, I understand people's concerns about things and, you know, I get it. But, you know, at the same time, Mr. Townley's been here for a long time, been on that property for a long time as well. You know, I feel like that if we will abide by the noise ordinance, maybe even consider if he can move it some, or it's not 25 feet to the property line, move it a little bit. You know, for me personally, if he's doing it on his own property and not doing it for commercial purposes, which we would not approve that in this meeting anyway, so.
It's closed to the board for discussion.
Anyway, without interruption. You know, for me, if we, if we have it in the guidelines and he, and he makes those guidelines, then, you know, I don't, I don't see it being a problem.
Is there a motion?
A motion to recommend approval for one year starting in June of 2021. So it would expire in June of 2022 with the condition that it's hobby only, no, no trucks coming in. And then, you know, if he wants to try to get another one in a year and, you know, maybe the neighbors still have a problem with it, maybe they don't, but I don't think we can do more than one year anyway.
There's motions. There's a second.
I think I would second it, but I, under the condition that he's going to need to bring logs in on something other than a pickup truck. So we can't have the state that it can't
Well, I think he's using his own. That he's cutting off the property is my understanding.
There's a motion on the floor with the stipulation of recommending approval for one year, condition of no trucks. Is that what you said?
Expiring June 2022.
June 2022. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Move on a second on the floor, all in favor. Motion is carried three, zero with one abstention. We are a recommending board. This will come before the Board of Commissioners next month. October 21st, this will be heard before the Board of Commissioners, at which time they can approve or deny or increase it from one year to five years or change stipulations. ZA 21-15 Miles Hensford and Talent LLC. OBO Sony Electric Membership Corporation is requesting rezone and the special use of a semi-public services tax mount parcel 115-004, 115-005, 115-005-001, 115-006, 115-007, and 115-008 from RA and CHB to CIR for the purposes of developing the props currently, 171,900 square feet of semi-public use. If someone here to speak for Miles Hensford and Talent.
Chairman, members of the planning commission, Ethan Underwood with Miles Hensford and Talent.
Mr. Underwood, if you would, please write your name and address on that piece of paper.
Yes, sir. With me tonight is Mr. Ryan Satterfield. He's with Sony MC and we will, he, he's happy to answer any questions that you have. But quickly, and, and, Mr. Harmony, will you be fine moving this slides for me? We are requesting, as stated, a semi-public use. I, I've been doing this almost 20 years. I've never filed an application for semi-public use. And what that is, is a private utility. There's just not a whole lot of, of them. But your new land use resolution does contemplate it and it only allows them in the CIR zoning category. So we are asking for that zoning on a piece of property off of Carlisle Road. So a little over 30 acres, almost 31 acres. And it's for a stated 171,900 square foot semi-public use services facility. What that is, is if you're familiar with Sony MC down in downtown Coming, it's a staging location where they can send their folks out to respond to emergencies. They're very excited to be here in Dawson County. You'll also shave about an hour of their response time off if they're needing to get up into Hall County, Lunkin County and respond to storms. So they will have an office at this location where they can deal with customer service issues. They will also be storing poles and transformers and their vehicle fleet. With that, we also understand that want this to be a good-looking facility aesthetically pleasing. And so we will show a little bit of the site plan here. If you move to the next slide, Mr. J. Just so you're familiar with the area, this is the current zoning. Part of it's already zoned commercial. Carlisle Road, it's behind the apartments that are being built on Highway 400. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan does call for commercial use on this side of the road. You can see that the gray area to the north is shown for industrial. And coming further down, this is shown for general commercial, but we are hopeful that this will be approved. Your staff did look at those considerations in their staff recommendation. They did recommend approval on this. We're stated it does comply, even though it is a slight deviation from general commercial, just because this is the only zoning category that's usually allowed in. Next slide, please. Just so you're aware, to the north, there will be a 50-foot buffer that's required. Part of the property is in the 400 corridor district, so it has to comply with those requirements. And to the south, we're showing a 10-foot buffer. That's why they're a little bit different because that southern portion is not in the corridor district. There'll be a 10-foot landscape strip along the frontage of Carlisle Road so that you have an attractive screen for folks that are using that road. Next slide, please. That we held a public participation meeting. And I believe the Rob, Robertsons who are here, they may, they may speak tonight, but they came and were kind enough to spend some of their time and tell us what their concerns are. They live in, their, their personal residence is in that little loop that's just to the southeast of this property. And they expressed concern, saying, well, does this mean that everything in this area is, is turning commercial? And the answer is, that's what your comprehensive plan calls for. In fact, their home is called for commercial use on the future development map. That doesn't mean they have to move and it doesn't mean that folks who come in here first shouldn't be good neighbors. So we wanted to try to address some of their concerns. What they did raise a concern was they said they're having some trouble, trouble now with commercial vehicles parking on Carlisle Road. So we are going to propose a zoning condition to address that, to make sure that that will not happen with these, these vehicles. They have addressed concerns with speeding. We understand that that's everyone's concern, but we think actually having this facility out there will be able to help control some traffic. Next slide, please. And this is your staff report. I won't read it to you. We'll incorporate it. Next, please. What we wanted to address was their concerns with lighting. So we did put specifically zoning conditions in that addresses that the lighting, no lights, spillers, it's going to be a burden to them. You have to have downward-facing lights. It's not facing out and hitting any of the adjoining property owners. Condition number two, we proposed saying that all parking proposed shall be contained onsite. Parking of vehicles along Carlisle Road will not be allowed except during emergency situations. And then also, there was a question about fencing. We're proposing that there would be a black or green vinyl coated fence along the perimeter of the property, but it will be inside the landscaping. So it's not out on the property. As, as the, the landscaping grows, that fence will just disappear. One last comment we did want to address. We saw in your staff report, there was a recommendation to consider a gravel parking lot as opposed to an asphalt parking lot. Sony MC respectfully asked that, that the asphalt parking lot be approved. It's just from a maintenance standpoint, it's much easier than having to replace gravel. From a concern from environmental standards, there will be stormwater ponds that are collecting that water. It goes into the ponds. That way, it's not going to be rushing off into adjoining property owners' lands. We freely acknowledge no one has a right to flood a, a neighbor. And in fact, Mr. Whitmire, who was here, he was kind enough to speak to us right before the meeting and said that was his major concern. We, we've told him that we would make sure that there would be no flooding and that the engineering department here, or public works department here is responsible for that as well. And then finally, Sony MC is going to be incorporating water quality devices to capture and retain their spilled oils and fuel so that it's not getting out and causing environmental problem. Again, all that's covered by code, but we're, we're happy to discuss any additional measures that you all would recommend to, to make sure that happens. So with that, we'll reserve the remainder of our time. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
As you spoke, part of the property lying in the 400 corridor and part of it not lying in the 400. Could you speak to the external facade of your buildings?
Brian, would you like to address that?
Please, if you would, and also sign the paper.
Sorry, I got a long name and a long address. Typical to what we have in Coming, we try to do brick that matches each building so that we can do a brick. So if somebody's riding by, it doesn't, even though there would be storage in some areas, it doesn't look like a cheap metal storage area. So we would do brick, we would do decorative stuff. If you've noticed, and if you've ever been through Coming, we have our Sony logo up. We keep it very nice. We would also have a building and grounds crew. That's their main objective, is to keep the place clean. Even though there's transformers, there's poles and stuff for storage like that, we're constantly blowing that, picking stuff up, keeping it very neat. I know you don't know our CEO, but probably one of the most proactive. He says, if you're going to visit our property, you're going to go away and haul. And that's what we plan to do. As Ethan said, we want to be good stewards in the county up here, good neighbors. We were nice enough to meet with a couple of the neighbors and that's our promise to them as well. We're just, as Ethan mentioned at the beginning, we're trying to get up this way so we can get quicker restoration time and things like that.
So when we look at your property, we won't be able to see a dividing line on this is in the corridor and this is not. It's all going to flow continuously. Is that correct?
It will. We have architects that are working with us on that. They're working with us on the design of the ponds. One of our most important things, we did this a few years ago in Coming. We did the water quality type retention ponds. It was a concrete with nice around it. We keep it maintained with a long maintenance crew at all times so that if somebody did come on the property and see it, it's not the, what is that? If they know what it is, we would keep it clean and up to date for everybody. And one of the things that Ethan also mentioned, Mr. Umwood, is that water quality. We have that being in the city of Coming. So if there was a spill and I'm will knock on wood, I've been there 23 years. We haven't had that. So, but if it is, it contains it, we're able to get it back out. And we do an annual service with our storm drains to hydrovac anything that gets trapped in that bottom. We get that taken care of as well.
Any additional questions that?
Brian, when you say brick facades, we're talking about the buildings on the front of your car.
Yes, when you look that way.
But on the, the back, the storage sheds with the equipment that does be bridge or does be metal.
They were probably a brick on the ends. You also, you're going to have some metal for the roofing and stuff in there. But yes, we can make, we can make the other for anything that is being seen from the road or anything from a neighbor. We will take care of that as well. Thank you for your time. Any questions? I'm sorry.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? If you would, please come forward. Just write your name and address on the piece of paper, sir.
Okay. I'm Helen Robinson. Mark and I are the owners on Palmore Place, which is the little circle. I have, and we have discussed it, we have no problem with the commercial part of it because we knew, we didn't know what we bought there 15 years ago, that it would be commercial. But we know now that probably that whole road is going to be commercial.
Yes.
That's okay. As long as everybody does it the way that they say that they're going to do it. So that's all I really have to say in favor of it. Can I go ahead and say my?
If you'll be seated.
I'm sorry. This is my first time. I'm sorry. Now, I'm done.
Is there anyone else speaking in favor of the application? Is anyone else speaking in favor of the application? Seeing none at this time, is there anyone speaking opposition to the application? Ms. Robbins, would you please come forward? No, you're good.
The only opposition that we have, and this goes way back to when they did Carlisle Road. We had a rough time with that whole scenario anyway, but I'm not going to go into all that, no matter it's done. Um, our little road is that little dirt road. The county has only done one thing to the roads since they changed Carlisle Road. We begged and begged and begged and begged for them to maintain a road because that was part of it. When they cut us off, the county did promises that they would maintain the road. Bottom line is, we have a problem now with asphalt trucks, cars and everything that come down our road. Um, the cars at whatever speed they want to come down. Um, and the big trucks, like we were sitting near the Sacramento and one came down. They come down, it's not so much that they park on Carlisle Road. They do park at the beginning of Carlisle Road and wait until their time to go back. I understand they'll probably be moving. But I don't want the same situation with big trucks coming into that little road that is deteriorating every day because nobody maintains it. The other end of it, we can hardly go in and out of anyway. It's so narrow and skinny and the ditches are filled up and it floods. But anyway, that's my opposition. I don't want traffic down there. The other thing is, on Carlisle Road, when we try to get out of our road, this happened to me twice this week already, I've almost gotten hit because there's a hill and you can't see over the hills. So when you pull out to the right, to go down towards Whitmire, I guess. Um, or that other road, whatever it is, it's very dangerous. That's a very dangerous situation. So that's my other concern is the traffic and the speed, and the police do not they don't patrol that road. There is a speed limit sign at some point, I think on both ends. It says it's thirty-five, but I'm talking more like sixty, sixty-five. And when they talk that hill and we're pulling out, we're just like stuck. So it's just, it's not that we're opposed. Not up to the commercial stuff, but I just would like or studied on or something on the traffic and the noise and them not to come on our little section of the road. And I mean, you know, someday we may be commercial. I don't know. We're just a little acre, little acre there. So I doubt there's here somebody want that little acre. If I have to live there and listen to the noise, fine, that's fine. I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with safety and the deterioration, the continuing here deterioration of our area because of it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking opposition to the application? See, none at this time. We'll close it to the board for discussion. Do you want to need a discussion on Sony E M C's reason? See, none. Is there a motion?
One thing she did say about trucks not being on there, I think I saw Ryan shake his head, that would, wouldn't be an issue, but.
Part of the stipulations that they had. Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Second, move in a second to recommend approval, all in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Z A twenty-one dash sixteen Jim King is requesting free zone tax mount parcel one zero seven dash two five nine from R A for his entire culture to R M F for his entire multifamily for the purpose of developing a forty-eight town home community. Someone here to speak for Mr. King. If you would, please come forward. State your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim King, four sixteen Overlook Circle Dawsonville, Georgia. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Um, here tonight, we're proposing, uh it's a just small eight-acre site. It's right at the corner of Lee Castleberry and Stacy Lane. Um, it is uh shown as uh multifamily on the future land use plan. And um my client was, would like to build a townhome development uh right there consisting of forty-eight units. And um I guess I'll save the rest in case you have some questions.
I do have questions in regards to Lee Castleberry Road itself, the existing traffic that's on there. Would you be you, I, I assume your client, you're, you don't own this property, is that correct?
That is correct. No, sir, I'm representing um the Stark, Stark family.
Who's the owner of the, of this piece property? Just their name. Mr. King, would your client be willing to look at improving the road of Lee Castleberry Road, just going to this parcel? I mean, we're talking forty-eight units on eight acres, is that correct?
On eight acres, on like eight acres, yes, sir. Forty-eight units on eight acres.
Forty-eight units on eight acres.
I'd certainly talk to him about it. I, I don't know. Um.
Ms. Rucker, would you please come ahead and come forward to the podium and write your name and address on the piece of paper that's there? You wrote your name and address on the piece of paper, please. So we have you on record. Okay. I did not see any construction out there at the time. That's why I was asking. Are, are you saying they're already doing this?
Yes, from my understanding, they're already doing the roundabout at the end where the new subdivision went in across on um Lumpkin County.
Okay. Coming from four hundred, your way.
Straight through. Lee Castleberry.
Will they be widening it in front of your property as well?
From my understanding, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
For Jim, I guess. Would your uh, this is in the four hundred corridor, does that apply to residential? Okay. So you, there's architectural standards you'll have to meet the four hundreds.
Yes, yes. Architectural standards will have to meet four hundred quarter, we got that. And my, my client would like to speak to the, the road improvements.
Okay.
Um, he has told me he'd be willing to, you know, dedicate right away and um he will have to build a, a D C L lane to go into his property. All of him, this is Billy Star.
Yep, Billy Star, three, three, twenty-five Mathson Drive, Atlanta, Georgia. We, we are proposing obviously to improve the road in front of our property with these Lanes. Uh, we also have an agreement with a lot of water and sewer uh to pay a pretty substantial number to um help them share costs to improve a water and sewer extension line going all along with Casper Road. So we're kind of getting hit, hit there too.
So then you'll have which amenities, our utilities, we have at that time, then you would have water and sewer as well, have gas.
Yes.
Okay.
Potentially, yes. We may have gas for common area if there might be electricals in the townhomes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got another one for Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Star.
Yes, sir.
In the staff comments, it says that uh G dot said further coordination will be necessary. Do you know, have you had any conversations with them? I'm assuming that's because of what's coming on four hundred, but.
No, sir, we have not had any. Um. So we're, we're on the opposite side of Stacy Lane on the west side of Stacy Lane.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised they said that.
Yeah, me too, um, actually.
I was wondering what they, what they were wanting.
I will, um, uh, I don't mind before the board meeting contacting G dot and finding out if they have any particular plans for it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. King. If anyone here to speak in favor of the application. If you would, please come forward, write your name and address on the piece of paper.
Uh, Robert Edwards, one, one, seven, Lee Castleberry. I'm the owner of the two pieces of property directly west of this and more importantly downhill. Um, the corner of Lee Castleberry comprising the two pieces together is twenty-five acres. I don't have a problem with this. I mean, you know, time marches on, the county's going to develop. I am a little surprised that y'all are, y'all have a site plan for this, because I'm just a little surprised to put up a, you know, something without a site plan. I don't know these gentlemen, and you know, I know. I'm not saying I don't trust them. I'm just saying that's kind of weird.
We do in our packet. I don't know if you've seen it.
Public knowledge then. Um, and the only other concern I have really is the drainage. Right now, it's ten eight, you know, it's about eight or ten acres, and when it comes down to my farm, it's blasting, you know, and it's, we're in that rainy cycle now, so really don't want my pond filled up with silt during construction and concerned about the quantity of water, you know, going from grass to asphalt basically in roofs. It's going to be a lot more violent water coming through there. So I just, retention pond, just want to make sure of that. Questions?
Thank you. Anyone else speak in favor of the application? See, not easily, anyone speaking opposition to the application? See, none this time. We'll close it to the board for discussion. Need a discussion, gentlemen, on eight acres into forty-eight townhomes. See, none is there a motion?
Motion to recommend approval.
Let's second that.
Move in a second to recommend approval, all in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Once again, this is recommended board. This will be heard before the Board of Commissioners next month in October. We do. Uh, V R twenty-one dash fourteen Jim King is requesting a variant from land use resolution. Article three, section three oh eight, C six B, the width of the driveway. Mr. King, if you would, please come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, or your board. Um, this is the exact same variance that we just requested on that previous zoning. And again, this is uh due to a uh, a provision in subdivision regulations that say that the, in a multifamily zoning, the driveway width cannot exceed ten feet in width. Um, obviously with a ten-foot wide driveway, you can't put a double car garage and um, I think everybody would prefer, everybody would prefer they have a double car garage. Um, and so they, they do want to put in double car garages, but in order to do that, we need this variance to uh, to allow up to a twenty-foot driveway width.
Any questions, Mr. of the applicant? See, none. Thank you, sir. Is anyone here to speak in favor of the application? See, none. Is anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? See, none. At this time, we'll close it to the board for discussion. Need a discussion on a variance for twenty feet instead of ten. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, recommend.
Second.
Moving a second to approve the variance, all in favor. Motion is carried three zero with one extension. Brings us to updates by planning and development by new planning director Sharon Farrell.
I'll introduce our new planning director. Her name is Sharon Farrell. She comes to us from Forsyth County and their planning department. Um, she's been with us about a week and a half now, and we've managed not to run her off. So considering this a great win.
No, I, I, I think tonight I am the update, and hopefully next month we will have some updates for you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Or adjourn, that will close thing.